Please rise with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. This evening is a public hearing and I am going to give it to the clerk to read the notice for public hearing.
Evening, everybody. Today we have a public hearing. It was announced they had a special meeting held by the town board on February 5th, 2024. The meeting is in regards to New York Voting Rights Act resolution that was passed that night as part of the resolution. We are expected to hold two public hearings. Today is the first one. We have another one scheduled for Saturday at 9:00 a.m. here in the same building. Anybody who wanted to provide comments could send them to Town Board email or provide them in person tonight or Saturday. We did receive a few comments from people and they reported to the board already today. You may continue to do that until Saturday's hearing. Anybody who wants to speak can sign up on the sheets that are in front there. There's a copy of everything that was posted to the website in regards to the meeting. So I will turn it over to the supervisor.
Okay, thank you. At the podium, there is a signup sheet. I know a number of you fine folks have already signed up to share comments. For the meeting this evening, we're going to proceed with giving each person five minutes of speaking time to begin. We're going to be relatively generous with extensions as needed. And as we go through, the goal is to give everybody a chance to speak and share their thoughts here. So just ask that you sign up and that we keep in with these time limits and as the board extends times for certain individuals, if required, that we just adhere to that so that way we can keep this public hearing orderly. So I will give it just a moment for any other individuals that want to sign up to share their thoughts and then we will begin. Our first speaker is Ken Young. Oh, sorry, Ken, just a moment, please. Mr. Spitzer, if you can come up and do an introduction prior to comments.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, members of the board. My name is Daniel Spitzer from Law Firm of Hodgson-Ross. We've been serving as special counsel to the town in this process. The town received a complaint under the John Lewis Voting Rights Act alleging that there was racially polarized voting in the town in violation of the state law of the voting rights. The town, when receiving that, takes several paths. The path that this town took was to hire experts and to investigate the complaint. The complaint suggested to you two remedies, potentially putting into place districts instead of the current at-large system or term limits. The expert reports have been posted and copies made available. In addition, Mr. Borak, who represents the complainant, also hired an expert and he has kindly submitted that report to the town from their expert. There is evidence in the reports that recent elections demonstrate an incidence of racially polarized voting. When you look at the potential for a violation, there are two ways that violations can be shown. One is through racially polarized voting. The other is through the totality of circumstances, which focuses on things such as historical discrimination in town, whether or not there's been a history of electing persons under protected class, whether or not those persons are disadvantaged. So either of those two things can be shown. When you look at racially polarized voting, which was what the allegation was, you look at statistics rather than non-statistical evidence according to the law in terms of the preference, and you look at local elections as opposed to state elections, if you have the information, you will look at more recent elections as opposed to elections that may follow the complaint, and you look at patterns of elections. If you look through the reports from the town's experts, they took elections over the last six or seven years that they felt before that was not really statistically appropriate, given the change in populations and the available information. They showed a number of elections did not show racial preferences or racially polarized voting, but the most recent election, at least one instance, did. On the other hand, supervisor was the clear choice of a protected class and he was elected. So the evidence is mixed and I wish I could say to you, there's a clear, bright line. I'm sure that some of the advocates will say to you tonight, there is. I'm not sure the law says that. You need to evaluate based on what you think are the best possible outcomes for the community. There are a number of remedies that are discussed within the law if you choose to take action based on the allegations and the evidence that's been presented. It does not necessarily mean that you have to go to district voting. If you look under the remedies and it talks specifically in the law about the remedies that a court can put in place, you can put in district voting. You can also put in alternative methods of voting. For example, the city of New York has ranked voting. They did that in part to improve turnout from protected classes. Indeed, the city of New York does have a person of color, oh, my apologies, a person of color as their mayor. So there are different alternatives and the law is very clear that there are alternatives. One of the alternatives, a remedy that a court is allowed to put in place should there be litigation or you should choose a remedy, is to change the dates of the elections to be concurrent with state elections. Well, the state legislature has already done that for you. The state has changed the dates of future elections in the town. Some of the terms are shorter to coincide with that and you'll be the same time as state elections. There is a lawsuit that's being proposed by Anadaga County to challenge that state law, but for now, that remedy is actually already in place. There are other remedies that are available. District voting is the one that is the most common remedy when we see evidence of racially polarized voting, but it is not your only option should you decide that there is a remedy required. I urge members of the audience tonight, just talk about all these things. Talk about racially polarized voting, talk about any evidence that they want to give you in terms of the totality of circumstances, why there might be a violation in that regard. Keep an open mind about all of this evidence as we put it together for you to consider what's the best interest for the town as you move forward. Are there any questions I can answer from the board?
Just a clarification that this is a public hearing and not a dialogue between the town board and the audience, correct?
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor.
All right, and with that, our first speaker on the signup list this evening is Ken Young. And as he approaches, I'd like to make a motion to waive the time limit for Ken Young. Do I have a second? Councilmember Kaminsky, all in favor? Any opposed? All right. Ken, the floor is yours. We won't run the clock for you.
All right, my name is Kenneth Young. I am plaintiff here. Polarized voting is what I'm saying it is. And by the way, Madam Clerk, will you be sending out the information that you received, the letters that you received? Will they be published?
From your council?
From the residents. The letters that you received from the residents, are you going to publish?
Usually it just goes to board members. I mean, it's up to the board members if they want to post it online, but usually it just goes to board members.
All right, so maybe the board member can think about doing that. You know, that would be very good for everybody. Again, I am the plaintiff here regarding polarized voting. I ran this November, second time I run in town for the town council chair. And I won a certain section of town, which is the northwest quarter. Couldn't win because South Chiquitahuaca outvoters, okay, didn't win. But I'm sure, as you know, the people who did win, the Democrats who did win, should also realize that had I not run, you probably wouldn't have won either. Okay, so you should always consider that too, that we need everybody on board to try to always get a seat for the people that deserve a seat. I had the most votes in our area. However, I'm not sitting here amongst you. You know, when I look at this board, this board looks to me not to be very diverse. This board is diverse in one aspect, and that's the bar, being a female, okay? And that's the look anyway, okay? I'm just saying, that's the look. I think that it's polarized voting. I think that you guys have an obligation to the whole town, to listen to the people, to look at the whole situation in its totality and make sure that everybody's represented. If, and then I'll say this, it's not, it's not just about minorities being up here. It's about people from communities, neighborhoods that we live in, that will have a spokesperson for us. That's what we need. We need people in our own neighborhoods to speak up for us. If you live on the other side of town, you're not coming to my side of town. I've been here since 1996. I see the change, okay? I see the change and I think there ought to be more change. And that change should be that the people in the communities should have a say, whether they be black, white, Muslim, Asian, whoever. You know, it's not necessarily meaning a black person has to be up there. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that people in the community should be represented, okay? My side of town, I see the difference. I see the change. Down Walden Avenue is disgusting, all right? Nobody's addressing that. I see that every day, okay? I write down Walden. This is diploma. Okay, you want to use that word, it's diploma. I'm sick of it, you know? I see grass that's not taken care of. I see a whole bunch of stuff in our neighborhoods that are changing. When I moved here again, there was street sweeping going on all the time, all right? Here lately, don't see it. We have to change. We have to do better. We gotta, we gotta look out, look out for each and every neighborhood because if these neighborhoods on the northwest side, if they go down, guess what? Your taxes going up. You live in those neighborhoods, your tax is going to go up and mine's going to go down, all right? I don't want to see that. I want to see my neighborhood thrive and grow, just like the South Chiquitagua. But the only way it can happen right now that I can see is to have somebody in the community to speak up. And that's all I want. I want to be able to, I want to be able to have a seat so that I can tell you what the residents are looking for, all right? Because otherwise, we're going to get what we got. It's not right. So that's where I am with this. Thank you.
Next on the list is Frank Max.
Good evening to the town board. My name's Frank Max. I live in South Chiquitagua. I'm a supporter of Kenny Young. Unfortunately, he didn't win. I want to contest a few things Steve and Kenny has said. I'm against the changing of any kind of votes and I'll tell you why. Under the John Lewis Voting Rights Act, there's a couple clauses in there that haven't been mentioned and I haven't had a chance to read the law report quite fully yet. Modernizing the formula to determine which states or localities have a pattern of discrimination. No last-minute voting changes happening 108 days before an election. This would expand the government's authority to send federal observers to any jurisdiction where there may be a substantial risk of discrimination at the polling elections day or early voting date. So the reason we have at-large voting, not by districts, the theory has always been, and by the way, I was chairman of the town for eight years, Democratic and vice chairman of the county party for a number of years, and a committee man for 35 or so years. Now, one of the arguments made is discrimination. I've been in the town 37, almost 38 years, and I've never run across a report that said we had, we have discrimination. Obviously, everybody knows there's forms of that. But in the voting of the committee men vote, for example, the Democratic committee is a general rule, is pretty much 90% plus white voters voted for Kenny for the endorsement. I put a sign up for him, worked the neighborhood, made phone calls, was very hopeful that he would win, but he didn't win. Now, you're talking about district by district where Kenny did good. Most people, the six board members here, I researched everybody, know where y'all live. It's, it's a very disparate group. Everybody lives in key areas, Williams Street, City Line, Polarski Depu and Jocinski Depu, Chiquitagua area. So I don't see any reason to have a district type vote. Now, when we talk about the vote of the election, and I've been involved with these elections for many, many years, here's what happened in this election this past year. 63 election districts were won by the Democratic Party, 13 by the Republicans, and there was close races or undetermined who was the leader in, for a total of 21, meaning it might have been one Democrat, two Republicans, two Republicans, one Democrat. So that's what we had. Now, the general election vote, this is for Kaminsky. This is for, I'll read all three, 8,351 votes, 8150 and 7823, okay? Now, Vern Thompson, Mrs. Edner and Farbikowski lost Democrat versus Republican. They had a minor party line. The minor party line gave them 2,000-plus votes. That put two of them in for the victory. Understandable. What's fair is fair. We talk about unfairness in elections. The differential between the first-place vote and the sixth-place vote in this town was 961 votes, which comes to less than 10 votes per election district. Now, we'll go back and we'll talk about what Ken Young says about the districts. In the south area, supposed to be his bad area, he did well, but the Republicans did well too. There's reasons for these things. This is not prejudiced. I would vote for Kenny. He knows that. I was a big supporter of fundraisers, the whole bit. But to bring these things up and turn them into racial issues is not the way to go. That's my opinion. And I'm hoping that all Democrats win. But when we, when the Democrats don't win, you can't go crying the blues. If you lose, you lose. The Republicans work hard. They win. You come back harder. You try to win the next election. And that's basically all I got to say. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Mann.
Good evening. I would like, for the current voting system in Chiquitagua to continue, I don't like this kind of division. I do not want to live in a ward. I would like to see all candidates campaigning throughout the entire town always. I would like to see all winners working for all of the residents always. I also oppose two-year term limits, mostly because I feel it takes time to get going in the job and making a difference. I took a look at the documents offered by Mr. Young on his GoFundMe page after I read the articles in the Buffalo News and the Chiquitagua Bee. I am concerned about Mr. Young's implication that our town does not have equal voting rights. I live in the northwest part of town along the Cleve Hill football field, and I believe I've lived in this town since 1967. I have also lived by the airport off Lawson near Transit and off Lawson by Stiglomire Park. I do not know for sure if I live in an area of the town in which the most black residents reside. My husband and I voted for Mr. Young based on the campaign literature we received for him and based on a visit at our home from a couple who was campaigning for Mr. Young. We believe they came to our home shortly after August 29th last year because we remember chatting with them about the dead body found in Tom Park. I read that Mr. Young feels that only South Chiquitagua is represented by the town board, although the tables provided by him through his GoFundMe page separate the votes received as coming from west of Harlem, north of Broadway, and remainder of the town. I would like to mention that I checked with my cousins who live in Sloan and cousins who live on Brentwood off French. Neither saw Mr. Young campaigning in their areas, nor did my sister and her husband who live off French toward Union, nor did a family friend who lives on Towers near Stiglomire Park, nor did a family friend who lives on Laura off of William. I would suspect there is the possibility that Mr. Young did not campaign in the remainder part of town as well as he did in the west of Harlem, north of Broadway area. Because of Mr. Young's implication that Chiquitagua needs equal voting rights and because of the news coverage, I expected to see horrible numbers, perhaps differences in the thousands for Mr. Young on the voting tables provided through his GoFundMe page. But in my opinion, I feel that Mr. Young did very well, especially if this was his second time campaigning in Chiquitagua. I compared the votes for all of the candidates on the tables in several ways. I would like to note that Mr. Young, being the top vote getter in the election districts located in the area of the town in which most black residents reside, only received 134 more votes in this area than Mr. Kaminsky, who came in third overall. And Mr. Young only received 143 more votes in this area than Ms. Hammer, who came in fourth overall. Ms. Mikowski, who came in first overall and first in the remainder of the town, was fourth west of Harlem, north of Broadway, with only 855 fewer votes than Mr. Young. To me, that is a lower number than I thought it would be to be causing this amount of division. My husband and I will be watching for the outcome of this matter very carefully and we will be reviewing Jeffrey Weiss's memo to Hodgson-Ross soon. And my husband also wanted me to stress tonight that when we voted for Mr. Young, we voted for him based on what we knew of his character at that time. Thank you.
Misono, voting is yours.
Reverend Rick Misono, I don't know how I feel about this. I ran in 2007 and I had two lines and I lost. And then I ran in 2013 against Mr. Myers. I had four lines and he had won and he won. Thank God he won. He did a good job. I don't see any Italians up here. I feel a little slighted. Why? We can't do that. You know, whether I'm white, black, Latino, or Chinese, whatever, it doesn't matter. You know, it's who the people vote for. You know, and I looked at it this way, okay, I lost twice. That's okay. It's God's will for that. I got other things to do and that's what I'm doing. But what I'm concerned about is this, how are you going to split them up? All right, who's going to be split? Is it going to be six districts? Or if the board goes down to four, is it going to be four districts? That's, there's a lot of questions here that my neighbors and a lot of people out there are asking, how are they going to do this? And who's going to do it? Is it going to be the town board? Is it going to be the legislator? I don't like legislation. I don't know. And that, there's a lot of questions on how this would happen. But we got to put our differences aside. You know, whether you're Democrat, Republican, independent, whatever, doesn't matter. You're representing the people of Chiquitagua and Chiquitagua alone. And that's what's important. We have a lot of issues and they have to be brought up. And, and there's going to be fighting. There's going to be, there's going to be disagreements. But you know what? Iron sharpens iron, as the Bible says. And you know what? We can get to a place that we could get together and do what's right for the community. Please do what's right for the community, all right? And again, I don't have the answer to that because I don't know how it's going to be split up. The only thing is, when Kim goes up for reelection or Brian goes up for reelection, what is, what is the, the split going to have? It doesn't mean, all it is, is for the councilmen. It's not for the rest of you guys. That's right. And so does, so does Brian. So your, your judges. So does highway superintendent. So you're, all it has to do is with the council because I don't know what else you would do. If you have districts, it's just for the council. So how's that going to help everybody? Let's put this together. Hopefully, we can get it to a good place where we are and, and we get peace with this because Chiquitagua needs peace and we need unity and we need to go forward ahead. Thank you.
Next up is Ken Hewlett.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ken Hewlett. I've been a resident. And by the way, I think my wife was next. She's not going to speak. I'm going to speak for the folks, okay? I've been a resident here in the town of Chiquitagua for 17 years now. And probably for the last seven or eight years, I've definitely been an advocate of districts. And the reason why I prefer to have a district is so we can have someone to represent us that we can hold accountable. I, I just kind of feel like right now at, up with the at-large system, there's no real accountability and stuff for different sections of town. So I just believe, and I won't rule out, I'm not even going to talk about ethnicity and culture and race and all that right now. I'm just talking about just having someone that you can go to, that's from your community, that understands your community, understands your concerns directly or whatever that you can report to, you know, and they can go and represent you directly. This is, sometimes, you know, everybody is caught up on race and all this other stuff, you know, and they just want to keep on putting that out there and stuff. Sometimes, it's just about the people. And so, and this at-large system or whatever, to me, it's always, to me, it's always been not really a good thing. I could see having maybe one or two at-large members of the council and then some type of districts. But I can't see everyone just being at-large or whatever, you know, because you do create pockets like that. If somebody from, from a certain area of town or the whole group of council gets elected from a certain area of town or whatever, then probably a lot more stuff is going to lean towards that area because that's where those people, they know each other, they're familiar with each other, they're friends, family, whatever the case might be. In a district system or whatever, divided up in four, six districts, whatever it is, and whoever divides it up and stuff, you know, hopefully it'll be divided up fairly or whatever. But like I said, we can have some direct representation from an individual that we can hold accountable. You know, it's kind of hard to hold people accountable when everybody can just pass the buck. Well, you got six members, they're all at large and they can just kind of pass the buck around or whatever, you know? But when you're voting for this person, he's in your neighborhood, he might know, like the next time around, you don't do what the people are asking or whatever, you're probably not going to be there, you know? So that's, that's, that's just my opinion. A lot of this, you know, race stuff and all that and stuff, you know, we, let's get, let's get beyond that. And let's talk about what's really going on and stuff, you know? That's why I'm definitely an advocate for having a, a district system here in the town of Chiquitagua. Been here for 17 years now, you know, and it is time for that change, in my opinion. Thank you.
All right, we're skipping Kim, yes? Gotta make sure. I've got Pat Palau. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Palaui.
Palaui. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, council members and town clerk first. I just got a note from your side. I'm here actually because last fall, Ken Young rang my doorbell and he was the first person I've met who's running for council. I've only been in the town for four years. And I wanted to address some issues with him while I had him on my doorstep. And so of course I did. And one of the things I addressed with him was the issue of not having my own council person. I come from Buffalo. I was in Buffalo for over 40 years. So I have this long view of how nice it is to have a personal relationship with the person who I run into at the restaurant, at the grocery store. And I've always enjoyed that. I've always respected that. Right now, I live around the corner from Rashid Wyatt. My heart, a big part of my heart is still in the city. So I'm still like kind of grabbing his collar while he's mowing the lawn and saying, he's mowing the lawn and saying, um, "Hey, what's going on with this in the city?", you know? But now I'm in Chikwaga, and I'm here because it really does make a difference to have a personal relationship with your council member. And from my point of view, it'd be a lot easier for all of you to be focused on maybe fifteen thousand people instead of worrying about the ninety thousand. I understand that you go across committees, and how valuable that is for the whole town, but I personally would rather have my own council person that I can call up and say, you know, "This is Pat again, sorry, but could you do this, could you do that?" I, I found it very, 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 um, gratifying to have that relationship. Thank you.
Next up is Alexia Herod. Please correct me if I'm mispronouncing any names.
You got it right.
All right.
Hi, do you hear me okay today? All right, cool. Um, I'm Alexia, um, I've been a resident of Chikwaga for, for, no, almost four years, come August. Um, and I love Cleve Hill, shout out to my neighbors. Um, but I do support having a district, um, just because I have only seen some of you through the, um, meetings that we have, but I can count on one hand how many people have actually come to my doorstep. Um, I've seen Brian, I've seen Ken come to my doorstep to actually ask what's going on with, um, my neighborhood. Um, I have three young kids, and I would love to be able to have someone I can call. I feel like I can call Brian, he did leave me his number, but I have no idea what the rest of you stand for. I don't know if you guys really understand some of the things that we have to go through in Cleve Hill. I would like to see more diversity also on, uh, the council members. At least in my neighborhood, we've got a variety of folks, and I don't see anybody that looks like me on this board at all. I don't know if there's anybody that has valid experience, that can understand where I've come from, where, what my kids may have to deal with. Um, but I do support having a district, just to have that, uh, that accountability. I wanna echo what the gentleman in the back said earlier as well, so thank you.
Next speaker is Terry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna butcher this, Giles?
It's Gail, so now pass.
Gail, go fast.
The gentleman said it all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna butcher this one as well, it looks like, um, uh, last name's Washington.
Hello, my name is Ligeal Washington. Um, I'm a, I've lived in Chikwaga since 2016, and I've seen a lot of changes also. And I don't wanna, um, harp on race either, because my issues, it's not race, it's more, like the gentleman said, it's accountability, who to answer. Um, I could echo the lady, the only one who ever knocked on my door is Brian and Ken for my vote. Um, the only time I see you guys is when I go vote at, um, the church, you stand out there, path, um, pathways. Um, I live in, um, I'm Ken's neighbor, I live in, on Parkview Terrace. Since I moved there, it's been a lot of changes. Like he said, you go Walden, I don't even go down Walden. Block separates the value of my house. I said, I pay taxes, just like everybody else in this city. I don't care, basically, if you're man, woman, green, purple, doesn't matter to me. I need some accountability, I need to know who to call to fix up the streets. I need to call when somebody just wanna, um, when the snowplows don't come down. I need, when the streets are soft, when you got, um, cars racing up and down Pine Hill, I mean, Pine Ridge. I mean, this is ridiculous. It's, it's, but there's no one to call. So I am in favor of districts for that reason. I want accountability, I wanna, I want answers. Um, we deserve it, we're all taxpayer citizens for the town of Chikwaga, we want representation, and, thank you.
Next up is, uh, Joseph, Joseph Kay. Next speaker is Joseph, are you? Okay, okay. All right, this one is, I see Ann and Mark White, sir.
We're gonna pass also.
Okay. Next speaker on the list is Gary Borck, and I would like to make a motion to suspend the time limit for Mr. Borck. Second for Mr. Flarski, all in favor? All right, any opposed?
I don't know if I'll need more than five minutes tonight, but, uh, my first question was, you all received the, uh, letter from Michael Pernick at the Legal Defense Fund? Uh, and if so, can we get that posted for the public?
If I may, Mr. Supervisor, Mr. Pernick gave us permission to post it about six o'clock tonight, so I haven't had a chance to forward it on to the clerk yet, so, okay.
First, I'd like to give you all these, just as... That's what I see is a graphical depiction of the general purpose of voting rights laws. On the left-hand side, there's a column, it has to do with the act of voting. And this is, the Voting Rights Act deals with intimidation of people trying to vote. We don't have much of that in Chikwaga, we haven't heard much of that, at least. Uh, the other side of Voting Rights Act is the impact of voting. And that's what the John R. Lewis New York State Voting Rights Act deals with. When powers that be could not prevent protected classes from voting because of laws and acts being enforced, they came up with other ways. They came up with mostly redistricting in a way that would split the vote of protected classes, so they didn't have an opportunity to elect a representative. But since then, many have realized that at-large districts can help the same way. If they can outvote the protected class, because it's such a small portion of the voting public, they can essentially continue their power with no regard to the protected class. And that's what the John R. Lewis Voting Rights Act in New York State is designed to overcome. Uh, and that is the gist of what Mr. Ken's letter and complaint is. As to the issue about remedies, um, I don't think that relying on the even year is a remedy. First, your own expert's report has a couple of even-year racially polarized voting instances in it, so it's obvious that it wouldn't have worked in those years. Um, and the issue is, how are people voting not when they're voting? Increasing the number of people voting, which is what, what is the purpose of the even year, and we don't even know if that's gonna survive a challenge, but even if it did, that's to increase the number of people who vote, not how they vote. So I think we would just end up with more of the same in a larger context. As to, uh, districts, I wanna give you a little history on it, I know I've spoken, uh, some other meetings about it, but I think this is more appropriate to go through the whole history. Nineteen forty-eight, nineteen forty-seven election, town of Chikwaga. There were only four council seats at that time. Two were up for election, and the Republicans and the Democrats both promised they were gonna enact district voting if elected. Well, the two Democrats got elected, I'm a Democrat, so I criticize Democrats. The two Democrats got elected. And then, when Supervisor Holt, who was a Democrat but was in favor of district voting, put the resolution on the table, the Democrats balked at it. The reason they balked at it, the two of them said, "Well, we didn't know when we promised to have district voting that it was gonna shorten our term." So they voted against it just to protect their position on the council. I mean, that's the, they should have been run out of town immediately just for that position. Um, so district voting failed in nineteen forty-nine. Then in nineteen fifty-three, the Republicans who lived in the Cleve Hill area of town, pretty much the northwest section, uh, started a movement to get district voting, because they couldn't get a Republican elected. There were four seats, all Democrats, and Republicans couldn't get elected. They, they were a small minority in the town. Holt, again, uh, supported that, he was a Democrat, but he supported district voting as supervisor. They put in a petition, they thought they had enough names on it, but they didn't, unfortunately. A lot of the names were, were thrown off. But the council went ahead and put the referendum up for a vote in any of them, and it passed. That was a surprise. Now, there were two things involved in that election. And one was to go to district voting, the other was to increase the council from four to six. Both propositions passed. Immediately, the Democrats in town circulated a petition to rescind the district voting. And in fact, they were successful in getting it rescinded. So before it even went into effect, even though it had passed and never went into effect, it got rescinded. I wanted to read to you some of the articles from the newspapers at the time. Here's a Buffalo Daily News, March twenty-ninth, nineteen fifty-five. "New Reasons Cited For Keeping Wards In Chikwaga." "Support of the ward system to assure every section of Chikwaga with equal representation has been urged by Charles W. Wolford, an attorney for the Cleve Hill Homeowners Association." He was also the president of the Cleve Hill Republican Club at the time. "In elaboration on a previous statement, Mr. Wolford listed what he called 'other advantages to ward system.'" This was the night before the vote, by the way, disappeared. And this is the vote to rescind, he was trying to prevent it from being rescinded. "One, every citizen, regardless of so-called connections, will have an attentive representative in all matters coming before our town council. This will replace the present system of everyone being represented in general and no one in particular. Two, political control will be returned to the people and taken out of the hands of political bosses. Three, the even distribution of wards throughout the township virtually guarantees that there will always be members of the opposing parties in office at any given time." Maybe, who knows? "Four, the ward system would result in a rebirth of healthy public interest in town government." Now, the town of Chikwaga, at the time, the, uh, official newspaper was the Chikwaga Times. They wrote an editorial saying that, "In addition to all of that, uh, ward voting makes it possible for more people to participate in the election process, because the cost of a candidacy is significantly reduced. You don't need to spread your dollars out amongst the whole town, you only have to do it in your district. You can go meet the people in your district, you don't have to go meet the people through the whole town. So more people have an opportunity economically to participate in the electoral process." That's why I think ward voting is really the solution, if you're gonna adopt a solution. As for ranked choice voting and cumulative voting, uh, the problem I see with that is it doesn't work. For instance, in an election coming up in November, ranked choice voting, cumulative voting, they have no impact on that race. It's a race for a council seat, we're gonna repeat racially polarized voting in that race. Uh, ranked choice and, and cumulative voting wouldn't have any impact. Cumulative voting works if you have three people running for six seats, or six people running for three seats, 'cause each, uh, voter can then exercise their three votes for one person. So that makes sense in that context, but it simply doesn't work in Chikwaga, where we seem to have a consistent number of vacated seats for various reasons, elections and other reasons. We've had a history of that. We've had a history of only having six members for a long time on the board, inability to appoint people. So we do have that come up often enough, but I don't think we should be focusing on those other remedies. I think district voting is the best remedy to have. On the issue itself about racially polarized voting, I think we need to remember that this is an issue about not the color of the candidate's skin, but of the ability of protected class members to choose a candidate of their choice. In your, uh, expert's report, you will see that there were candidates, racially polarized voting occurred with white candidates as well as black. It's not the candidate's color, it's the choice of the people, the voters. And when you have a, uh, town like Chikwaga, which is highly, uh, family diversity indexed, that's why we're a covered entity now, you can't do anything after September twenty-second regarding elections without getting clearance from the AG's office, uh, you have a situation where you really have a segregated housing, segregated community. And it makes sense to go to district voting to give that protected class the opportunity to elect a person of their choosing on the town councils. Now, I'm gonna have to discuss with your attorney, and hopefully with you, some difficult procedural issues I think you face, even if you decide to go forward with this, because the timeline is very compressed. You only have ninety days from that February fifth resolution to do something. And there's an election coming up that Ken Young has to decide if he wants to do anything about that. So we do have a compressed time matter, uh, to consider. And, and I hope you're working on that, you're gonna continue working hard and not put this by the wayside and end up making it a court case, which I think would be the least desirable way to resolve the matter, however we resolve it. Thank you.
Next on the list is, I've got Debbie and Carmen Barker.
Debbie's not here.
Okay, all right.
What I gotta ask is, on page two B, it says non-Hispanic white. I don't understand what does that mean, maybe somebody can break that down. Then it says black, Hispanics, and Asian. Um, I don't know where the other categories of other ethnicities go, like, uh, the, um, maybe Arabians, uh, the other brown people that you may say. Um, I don't understand why it was worded that way. Um, the questions I do have, with the one lady I was addressing, Ken, um, she said at certain areas that Ken went to, I guess she adjusted that he, uh, suggested that he went in, maybe the black areas? I don't remember Ken even being in my area, and I do see majority on my street, majority of black people on my street. So anyways, I don't never recall candidates here on my street. So anyways, I don't know why she said it was on that street. So, um, the other candidates that I did follow, or who was, um, the other candidates that was on the list, I went online, checked the information, that's what we all can do if we don't know who they are. Um, I lived in my area for twenty-three years, so, um, I followed all of, like I said, I followed all of the candidates. The other information I tried to find out is, um, who do we allow to end up buying all of our stores? Um, we got different diversities buying the stores, it'd be nice that we had common people that we used to have, is like 7-Eleven, now we got stores that's not even named, that's certain, maybe the, the common names, like I said, 7-Eleven. And then, like, I don't wanna pinpoint, go through this racist stuff, but the further you go to a suburbs, you don't have other people having these stores. How are we allowing it just in our border area? It, I think it's something going on, because I hear other people having problems when they going inside those stores. I guess they saying it's a little problem even going in those stores. That's all I have.
Next up is Stanley Cliver.
Councilmember, thank you for having the chance to talk, and I'm up here regarding this race thing. This, uh, to me, I've been over here now for twenty-four years, it's a, more a service and accountability thing. When I first started thinking about moving this area, I used to come over and see the tree-lined neighborhoods, trees on the, uh, down the street, all trimmed, really nice, no trash, garbage on the curves and everything. Matter of fact, there were curves. Now, also, when I came over here, the park had a bridge going over there, uh, and I couldn't understand why it wasn't just for Chikwaga, but then I found out that we accepted some federal funds to get the park. And so that's what's caused a lot of problems too, because it attracts people from in the city, and I seen there's anything wrong with coming to the park. But the service that was provided... But the service that was provided before I got there, see, because I'm comparing, I seen what my neighborhood looked like when I wasn't there. So when I moved there, and after six to seven years, seeing that those services that was provided to the people that were there before me, not provided to me, got me a little upset because my tax dollars are paying too. That's what this is about. This has nothing to do with race. This has something to do with accountability and the service that we think that we should get in their neighborhood, and we don't have the proper people that we can vent our frustration to. That's it. We're not asking for any money, anything extra. Well, it's back like you stated before, the last time that this John Lewis thing came up, it was a white candidate. It wasn't a black person. Plus, for some strange reason, we start off with this race thing. It's not about that. And please, stop thinking that. We're all human beings. We're all people. Can we stop with this white, black, and brown thing? That's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Next up is Heather Alt.
Good evening. My name is Heather Alt, and I'm inherent in support of election districts and term limits for the town of Chitewauga. As a newcomer to the town in 2020 and a first-time homeowner, I contacted the police department to ask if they would enforce traffic speeds on my street along our road between Sugar and East Delve. Little did I know that this would lead me to writing numerous letters and emails asking for help, attending traffic safety and town board meetings, collecting data about traffic speeds and vehicle crashes, starting a block club, volunteering for a local town council candidate, and speaking to you today as the town is on the verge of a lawsuit. For the last 30 years, the northwest section of Chitewauga has had almost no representation in local government. If you look at the maps that I just passed out showing the past four town supervisors and council members who served during their tenures, you'll see how utterly underrepresented the area north of Walden and west of Harlem is. In contrast, nearly the entire town board lived between Union and Transit Road and the neighborhoods surrounding Stiegelmeyer Park and Renting Woods alongside the village of Dupuy Border or south of Sloan along the West Seneca border. I'm assuming the geographical distribution is similar for the town's employees, police officers, appointed board members, and committee members. Over the past 30 years, my side of town has had 46 years total of total representation compared to 169 years for the other side of town. That's 20% on our side of Union and 80% on the other side of Union. How is that fair? This is not about race. It is about accountability. It's about having a representative from our side of town.
Amen.
It's almost as though history has already repeated itself when the Polish communities left Buffalo's east side in search of greener pastures in Chitewauga. My neighborhood is out of sight, out of mind, so the problems are mounting, crime is increasing, and blight is worsening. Speaking of Buffalo, their common council has the following statement on their website that could serve as a model for Chitewauga. It reads, "The mission of the council is to address in a thorough manner any concerns regarding the city while ensuring that citizens have easy and equitable access to resources provided by a trusted and transparent government. Chitewauga's at-large system has created a situation where the board focuses entirely on the concerns of the town without accountability to citizens. Our current system is not easy, not equitable, not trusted, not transparent, and town resources aren't accessible. A simple example is the two libraries. One is open seven days a week with four days of evening hours. The other library is closed every Friday and Sunday, has irregular hours from day to day, and it's open only two evenings a week. Therefore, I urge you to adopt a district election system and term limits so new people with new ideas can represent the needs of their communities and contribute to a future where everyone in Chitewauga thrives, whether you're a homeowner, a renter, black or white, Christian, Jewish, Muslim, young or old, a newcomer like me, or a lifelong resident." Thank you very much.
The last speaker on the list this evening is Ken Copas.
You can also call me Ken Old, because Ken Young, and I'm Ken Old, I'm finishing up. I've lived in Chitewauga for most of my life, started out in the present town area, but my parents moved out here when I was four. So I've lived on the north side and on the south side. I also had the pleasure of working for the town for about 37 years in various capacities, starting out youth bureau, got the recreation department, got parks for a while. So I've had a vast experience of working under, well, I've known nine supervisors since my life here, six of whom I've worked under, and I've actually known seven, and Holt is retired by the time I became, was a town clerk at the time. So I've worked with that many supervisors, but I also worked with a number of councilmen, Democrat, Republican, you name it. And one of the things that, I thought I was a student of government, I also thought that one time it did come up for a vote. It was turned down in '60. The board system, '53. It was passed in '53, it was rescinded in '55. I thought it came up again in '60. Maybe it was just as a topic it came up. Was an attempt to get it in '60, but it didn't pass.
Yeah, I believe it was early 1970s.
Yeah.
61?
So anyways, one of the things that, over the years, I've dealt with a lot of council, as I said. And one of the things that I find unique is that with the at-large councilman, you have seven people, including the supervisor on the board, not like mayor where he doesn't sit on the county council, but you have seven people that you can go to and possibly get attention. With district, you have one guy, and if you guys don't get along, or gals don't get along, or vice versa, you know, who do you go to? If you go to somebody in another district, you say, well, you don't live in my district. Here, you got the opportunity to deal with one or some people, or more, the many people you want to go to. We worked under a council committee system where we had a chairman and two councilmen, and a lot of the problems that occurred in the community would come before them and it would be resolved, were not resolved. At one time, the youth and recreation committee recommended lights in the town park, and the taxpayers groups in that area kind of spoke out against it, didn't want it, it was nimbie, not in my backyard. So that's why we don't have lights today in town park. Because of that, they could have had lights in town park, but Stiegelmeyer got it. So I think, you know, we have a great system. I think it's worked. I think of the 933 towns, I've seen both 13 or 15 townships have at-large, and you can't have a combination of both. You can't have at-large and district. It's either or. And you brought up about when I run for six. If you have four councilmen, you cannot have a ward system. And I think they're still on the books. But if you have six councilmen, you can't, you can't. But I think it's a system that works. I also ran for councilman back in my yoni foolish years of the 70s, and I got beat. I lived on the north side. I would have been one of the first North Town candidates, and I lost by a hundred-and-some votes because I didn't take a minor party candidate. I was also running against an incumbent that also switched parties, and he was a tough, tough person to beat. So I think we have a system. I think all the councilmen, if they're not approachable, shame on you. But I don't think, through the years, that I haven't seen a councilman that wasn't responsive, some more than others, but they all seem to be able to bring the issues to town. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak before we close this hearing?
I'm sorry, I passed, but I'll speak.
If you could just give me your first and last name.
Terry Gales. I have been a resident of the town of Chitewauga for 23 years, and I'm coming to, and I am in support of the districting. And the reason is, I have reached out to the councilmen several times and have fallen on deaf ears about curbs on our street. Trucks are coming down there, messing up our grass, and it's just not going to anyone. So I believe that if we had a representative, we can go to that person and say, hey, we've been fighting for curbs, so we're asking that you would do the districting. And also, it's not about race, but it's about the quality of life when we're raising our families and our communities. So I ask that you seriously consider districting. Thank you.
Anyone else? My name's Michael Urban.
Hey.
My comment is, is that this is the first time I've been down in these meetings, and I've never seen any of you. All right? Ever. All right? So I think it's a case of, all right, if a complaint comes to one of you, all right, there has to be some sort of documentation system, right, in which it's addressed and not dropped by the wayside, right? You know, like I says, the system works for a long time, all right? I myself have nothing against districts, but to me, the bottom line, it seems like if there's an issue, it's not being addressed in a timely manner, all right? Okay? I go send a letter to one town about my driveway being busted by the town plow backing up on it. And they told me it's not my, their responsibility, it's your responsibility, not because you're the owner. And then the next-door neighbor had a tree was planted by the town, it was living up the sidewalk. And they said, that's not your responsibility either. So, okay, I gotta fix it. At least I got an answer. That's the right answer or not, I don't know, but to me, the biggest problem, it sounds like from everybody talking here, is that when the issue is brought forth, it's not addressed. That's where the problem is. It has to be addressed, no matter what neighborhood. That's it. I'm done.
Anyone else?
My name is Deborah Green. And I moved to Chitewauga for 20 years, 2020. And I'm just, this is my first meeting too, just like this gentleman. And if it's district, I agree. I mean, I live on Century, and they did, they did the lines on Century Road. Someone's supposed to take care, it's been paid. I'm a taxpayer, they say they paid for it. I know this is not this kind of meeting, but if I had somebody, I've called you, I've called Tony on the Highway Department, they say it wasn't, the lines was not going to be, it was a mistake. They paid for the lines and the lines will be there. I'm on Century, Burke, and Kedley Ten, and Kedley Ten to Cleve. There were lines, they said, no, it wasn't. It was lined. At this point, I'm a little upset behind that. I know what I seen, but it went to the wayside like this gentleman. If someone just gave me an answer, right now I've got lies. I have promises not kept, but I need to go to somebody and say, when are we going to get this fixed? I pay my taxes, I pay them all on time. We need some accountability. That's, I think, that's what we really need. I was getting a little upset to calm down, but thank you for listening. I just had to say that. Appreciate you.
Anyone else?
I'm Rick Richneck, your Highway Superintendent. The issue's been in this game 45 days. We've made great strides already. We're doing a lot. We've got a young crew. I know we're out there in a snowstorm. It's tough to see. If there is no curbs, we're going to tear up some turf. We're going to come back and fix that turf. We got crews out. I mean, luckily, the weather's good, sweepers are out. We're still picking up leaves. We're doing whatever it takes to make this right, okay? So I know this, this whole thing, the biggest thing in this whole government is Republican, Democrat, whatever we have, we're here to work for the people, and that's what I'm here to do, okay? I'm here to take care of the residents. That's my job, and I'm going to do the best I can do to make that happen. You have concerns, get it to the website. We're getting the comments. We're going out, we're taking care of this stuff. A tree between the sidewalk and the street, it's rotted. Make the complaint, it'll get to us. I mean, it's a big town, you know, somebody's got to be first and somebody's got to be last. It's just the way it happens. But I mean, we go out and we look at them. If a tree is deteriorated bad, they're going to get, you know, the first shot at it, you know, or if it's a, a life hazard, things like that.
Rick, sorry to interrupt. It's, you got to speak to the people.
Okay. Anyway, speaking to
You were speaking to the people.
The people, okay? This is what I'm here to do, just speak to.
I want to give you the time. Just kind of hold on to this.
But the biggest thing is, if everybody just votes from their heart and votes for the residents, this is where we got to be. That's going to help us do our job better, and which in turn does a job for the residents. So we're out here just to do the best we can. Yours.
With that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn for the second. Second for Councilman McVintzki. All in favor? opposed? We are adjourned.